By both parties, who are you referring to? I mean, okay, thank you.
The board and the petition.
Thank you, I just want to make sure we.
As opposed to retiring prejudiced in asking to waive the filing fee if we refile.
Yeah, you can do it either way.
This is Ocean.
Yes.
How are you doing?
All right, thanks, you guys?
We're great.
Loving the life.
No surprise.
Loving the drink.
No surprise.
Are.
So I'll wait to get.
Are any other neighbors here tonight?
Uh, one is, and I'm gonna talk with him after the first petition.
Okay.
He's gonna talk.
All right, okay.
Right where you are.
I don't know, maybe I didn't send you this, I might have forgotten.
Well, you may have sent it to me, this.
I don't know, I sent you some.
Oh, yeah, no, I've got, I, oh, I, I think I've got this, yes.
It's the one we've used several times, I don't know if we've used it on your cases or not, Attorney Crowell. You might remember John Burton, he drafted that up for us.
Oh, yes. He was a good addition.
He was your one.
It's, uh, seven P M. So, I'm going to, uh, call the meeting to order. Uh, welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board Appeals. On this day, August thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and Massachusetts zoning enabling act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. During this meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly any member of the Board, Secretary, Attorneys, President, presenting a case, to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being followed. If I could have, uh, each of the Board members identify themselves, starting with, uh, Dave.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Uh, Brian Sullivan, Chairman.
Chris Murphy.
David Noy.
Tim Bailey.
Okay. And I think for our first, uh, case. And, uh, I believe you wanna call the case and then we'll talk about post-plaint.
Uh, case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six dash twenty-two, Ocean Avenue, twenty-two Ocean Avenue. Uh, William, Attorney William Crowell representing the owner. The property is located at twenty-two Ocean Ave, assessors map six B parcel L ten in the R H two zoning dish, district. The applicant seeks the special permit or in the alternative a variance to demolish, replace pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws three twenty-five dash fifty-two and fifty-four in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and ten. This has been continued from July twenty-seven, twenty-two.
Okay. I'd like the applicant, Representative Attorney Crowell, to introduce themselves and any person that may be assisting you in tonight's presentation.
Mr. Chairperson, Attorney William Crowell, representing the petitioner. And the petitioner is requesting, uh, a further continuance to the September twenty-eighth hearing to give him additional time to, uh, discuss the case with, uh, a couple of the butters and to review, uh, the, uh, certified plot plan with, um, another surveyor. So, we're asking for a continuance to September twelfth, September twenty-eighth at seven P M. And I have signed the agreement to extend the dates to, to no, no greater than one hundred and eighty days after the date of this agreement.
Okay.
I move that in, uh, case twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, we grant a further continuance until seven P M. On, uh, September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, that's our next meeting.
Okay, anybody would like to second that motion? Okay, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right? Okay.
Thank you, and if you could ask the Board of Appeals Secretary to simply email me a copy of that.
Will do. Okay.
All right, case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, Dale M. and Susan E. Shaw with their attorney, William D. Crowell. Owner of the property located forty-five Christopher Way, assessors map one oh eight parcel X three dash twenty in the R R zoning district. The applicant seeks special permit or in the alternative a variance to construction, addition, or retaining wall on the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaw three fi, three twenty-five dash fifty-two and fifty-four, Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and ten.
Okay, uh, were there any other relevant notices regarding, I think the Health Department, um?
Uh, let's see. Regarding, uh, case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, uh, the Health Department, Carrie Shoner, Senior Health Agent. Uh, she has reviewed the special permit to build a retaining wall on a non-conforming family dwelling at twenty, forty-five Christopher Way. The proposed project meets the setbacks to the recurrent septic system. Uh, has a Title V passing inspection in August of thirteen, is designed for a three-bedroom. The complete floor plan of the entire dwelling must be submitted to the Building Department, permit application in order to the Health Department to determine bedroom count for final approval of the proposed, uh, project.
Okay, all right, for, uh, members assigned for voting for this case, uh, the Al Donahue, Dave Noy, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Tim Bailey. Okay, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, ask the applicant to represent to introduce themselves and any person that's gonna be assisting, assisting you in your presentation, the application.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Attorney William Crowell, representing, uh, Dale and Susan Shaw this evening. Mr. Shaw, Dale Shaw, is seated with me to my right, uh, regarding forty-five Christopher Way. And I have two handouts for you, if, if I may. Uh, one is a letter from, and a butter, the immediate a butter, and, um, in favor. And the other is some anecdotal evidence and thoughts from Mr. Shaw as to why he really needs this, um, addition and retaining wall. Involving grandchildren and children. And I, I understand that because I've just had a week and a half with three grandsons under five living with us.
It was a wonderful week.
So.
I'm glad you made it there tonight.
I have my eyes.
I'm surprised you're here.
Said you still have a house.
Not include the other three grandchildren. Or not. But at times there are six.
Thank you.
Give you a few minutes to read through those.
Sure, absolutely.
I'll read this as a record.
Okay.
Uh, regarding, uh, case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven, forty-five Christopher Way. There is a letter from a, um, the owner of forty-one Christopher Way, Daniel A. Prepaul. Mr. Prepaul indicates that he lives next door to this property. He says, "I have examined the plans for the Shaw addition and replacement of their deteriorating retaining wall. I have no issue with the addition, which is within all recognized zoning setbacks. And I also have no issue with the replacement of the retaining wall being fifteen feet from my property instead of the normal twenty feet." The land and, uh, topography requires a retaining wall, and I have similar retaining wall on my driveway, which is adjacent to the Shaw driveway. I would encourage.
All right, thank you. Okay, Attorney Crowell, would you present your case?
Thank you. I attached to the petition a copy of the assessors map to show you where the property is located. It's in East Howard, off of, um, Kendrick Road, takes you on to Christopher, Christopher Way. I also attached, um, my narrative to describe what the petitioner would like to do, as well as a plot plan showing the pie-shaped piece, uh, both, uh, existing conditions and proposed conditions, and the building and elevation plans. And just as a side note, uh, as, as you know and as I know, we will address, we have to address whatever issues the Board of Health has, and we'll do that prior, subsequent to hopefully approval tonight and prior to getting the building permit. We have to keep them happy. So that will be taken care of. So the Shaws have a deck that, uh, expands the, uh, the entire length of the, uh, or width of the, of the rear of the single-family residence at forty-five Christopher Way. And what they're seeking to do, as per the proposed plot plan, is to basically, um, uh, remove half of the deck and put in addition, extending out to the rear further of the existing dwelling, uh, for, um, a family room type of use, and have a garage under. In doing so, they're also seeking, uh, to widen the driveway somewhat, and they need a retaining wall to do so. So I broke it down into two sec, uh, two, um, proposals, uh, this evening. First is, uh, for a special permit for the addition. And they meet all of the setbacks, as the neighbor noted. But site coverage is presently at twenty-seven point five percent, with a twenty-five percent maximum, and it will increase somewhat to thirty-four percent. In looking at the plans, I think the increase in site coverage would basically come from the, uh, widening of the driveway more than any kind of building coverage, uh, addition to the, to the site. But in any event, pursuant to the findings of the Gale case, we already have an existing non-conformity on site coverage at twenty-seven point five, so we're seeking to increase that to thirty-four point, thirty-four percent. And our contention is that, uh, that there would be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, traffic congestion, or the like, and it would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood to put this addition off the rear of the property that meets all the required setbacks. So we're asking for a special permit, um, for that portion of the petition. The other portion, uh, I, I respectfully disagree with the Building Commissioner in his, uh, denial letter or referral letter that I included a copy of. I think pursuant to three twenty-five seventeen F two of the bylaw that we don't need your approval. It may be that, um, if you'd like to, um, see a way to grant a variance for the retaining wall, just to give us belt and suspenders protection for that, that's, that's up to you. I don't think that we need it because I think that we're, under the bylaw, it says, "An open terrace or steps, stoop, or similar structure under four feet in height, you won't, you, you, you cut the setback in half, it goes to ten feet instead of twenty feet." So there's some difference of opinion, obviously, that the Building Commissioner thinks that this is not that type of structure, that it's a retaining wall. I mean, and, and the, under the bylaw, uh, definition of a structure is any combination of materials designed to give, uh, shelter or support. And I think that's what he's hanging his hat on there. So if the Board wants to find that, um, we, we meet the ten, the, the ten-foot setback because it's cut in half, then you don't need to grant us any relief on that, just make a finding that, um, pursuant to that section of the bylaw, that we meet the setback. If you think that we need a variance, um, then our contention is that this lot is uniquely shaped in that it's a slice of pie on that, uh, more or less circular, um, drive. And it has unique topographical features, there's a, there's a rise between the Shaw property and the Prepaul property, the butter that wrote the letter, there's a rise, and then it drops off on both sides and drops off about four feet down to the retaining wall. So the retaining wall is necessary to prevent erosion and, and, uh, fill from coming down into the driveway and causing a big mess, uh, in the driveway. The Prepauls have a, as he noted in his letter, they have a very similar feature on their property already. And we would contend that, um, the Board could grant a variance without substantial detriment to the public good. I think it would be actually for the public good, not a detriment to it, um, to have a, a driveway that doesn't have, um, fill coming down in and draining down in during rainstorms or, or whatever. And that, um, there would be no substantial, as I said, no substantial detriment to the public good as it would remain a single-family dwelling. If it's not granted, the Shaws argue that they would have a hardship, um, due to the possibility of the banking not holding for the driveway. And, um, they also need the expanded driveway to have an adequate turning radius so that, that when they're entering and exiting their, uh, garage under, that they would have sufficient area to, to turn around, or to make that turn. And that, that this, a variance in this situation would not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw because going five feet closer to the neighbor's lot line in this situation is not bringing any additional habitable structure towards the neighbor. And I, the way I look at it, the setbacks are to keep habitable, mainly habitable, um, structures far enough away from each other so you don't hear the music and the loud noises and the, the talking and, and so forth. So, but here, we're, we're talking about five feet closer with a very quiet retaining wall. It's not gonna disturb anybody. So, uh, we would ask that, uh, for those reasons, that if you don't agree with me as far as the interpretation of the bylaw, that, that you would agree with me that this, uh, situation meets the requirements of the variance, uh, pursuant to the statute. We'd ask that you grant it this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, before I ask the, other members for comment, I just have a initial question from, from the Chair here. The four feet, um, myself and going to the property and, and towards the, you know, further in, maybe like two sections of that retaining wall from the garage. And looking at it, it's, it's not four feet, but it's, it's just, just, just shy of four feet already. It seems to be in that three-nine, three-ten range. And then I'm looking at the, the hill going up. So, I, I was wondering if you might point out to me, and I couldn't find it in the plans, you know, where it's, it shows the fact that this retaining wall is only gonna be four feet high. Because it, it seems to me that the retaining wall is gonna be, to do its job, if you move it forward, I mean, towards the, the lot line five feet, that it's gonna be over four feet.
Well, could I answer the question?
Yes, you go, please do.
Uh, let's see. Do you have a copy of the, uh, the plot plan?
Yeah, I do, sir.
Okay. See, the plan was to, uh, the, uh, whoops, the, the part that's closest to the garage, uh, the, the current, uh, garage is more than twenty feet away from the prop, property line. So that, there would be a section there that would be more than four feet, or be probably five feet.
Okay.
But that's more than twenty feet away from the property line. It's only, uh, it should be, let's see.
So where it's less than twenty feet?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
The retaining wall would be four feet or less.
All right, I mean, it's just from going down there, just noticing the, the height and so forth, I.
Yeah, so.
Bring that to everyone's attention.
Let's see, I don't, I don't have a large plot, but you, can I approach the?
Oh, yeah, of course, of course.
They already have that.
Okay.
Careful on wires.
Oh, yeah, don't.
Don't trip on the wires.
Oh, okay. All right, so, um, if you look here, what, uh?
So this, this section here is twenty feet already?
Yeah, because there's a, there's a, there should be, there's a line.
Over here, the lot line's over here.
Let's see, there's a lot line. A twen, not a lot line, but a, uh, a line of where twenty feet exists.
That would be right, right here. I think, hold on a second.
Twenty-two point eight feet to the stairs.
So let's see. So there's gonna be a section here.
That's gonna be over.
It's gonna be over, over four feet, it's gonna be five feet.
Okay.
But then, once it hits, um.
This corner here, this edge here?
Then that should be four feet down.
All right, okay, that answers my question on that. Okay.
Because originally, um, uh, when I first started doing this plan, I, I was talking to Dave Anderson. And he had a, because I based all of these drawings and everything on what he had said, and it was, were, it's been ten feet.
Sure.
But then the new Building Commissioner came in and he had a different interpretation. So, um, so all those, these were, were done prior to that. But I mean, uh, if you was otherwise, I probably would have, or had the design of the architect.
Okay, Mr. Shaw, thank you very much, appreciate it.
David Anderson is the Building Inspector, and so Mr. Shaw had been working with him in the absence of a Building Commissioner. And Mr. Anderson indicated that he agreed with me that the setback is cut in half. And then Mr. Piccarelli came into the picture as the Building Commissioner, and he said he disagreed. He thinks that we needed a variance.
I mean, we can, the Board's gonna discuss this, but I, I, I see the value of going with a variance to, to begin with. So it's given the topography and the location and so forth. So it's, it's a question of what is, what is best for both the applicant and, and the town, are we granted? But I don't have a.
If it's granted, it certainly would be better for the applicant to have that in place.
What, the variance, okay, all right. Uh, Dave?
Yeah, I think the addition thoroughly meets the requirements of the bylaw, the Gale, the Deidre cases. They're simply intensifying one existing non-conformity, not creating any new non-conformity. And the addition's not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the public than the existing structure. I agree with Attorney Crowell, I think three twenty-five eighteen F provides that certain structures under four feet in height may project into one half of the setback. I think we can certainly, as a Board, say, a retaining wall is such a structure. And that's my opinion, I don't, I don't really think they need a variance. I think they can do this as of right.
Okay.
I think normally, I side with the Building Commissioner, but I think in this case, the acting Building Commissioner would think correct. And three twenty-five eighteen F is there to cover just this situation.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, I appreciate that, I agree with it, Mr. Ryer. And I'm a lit, when I say a variance would be better, I'm a little hesitant in, in saying, okay, a retaining wall requires a variance because it might come up in the future. And I just assume it, I could get the benefit on future cases of it being a retaining wall and half the distance to the goal line.
Well, the question here is if it's, if we're dealing with only four feet where, that's gonna be in the, under four feet, whatever, then it's, I can see the point of if you're going along with the current code and so forth, okay, and approving it under a special permit. But if it was gonna, but since you explained to me where that five-feet situation is, because that's the first thing I noticed when I pulled in. I was looking at the four-feet situation, I think, okay, what's, what's happening?
You could put as a, a, the condition in your, uh, finding that, um, if you went the variance route, that, or if you went Mr. Ryer's route, either one, you could say, as long as it's under four feet in height, anywhere where it's closer than twenty feet to the lot line.
Okay.
So, can I just make one comment?
Right, and if it's twenty feet, if we didn't put that in, they'd have an illegal retaining wall.
Right.
I mean, it's up to them to make sure it's under four feet.
Right.
If we tell them they can do it as of right.
Right, correct.
So where it's closer than twenty, they're gonna have to be over four feet to have a legal retaining wall.
Under four feet.
Under.
I'm sorry, where it's, yeah, under four feet, where it's over twenty feet from the lot line, they can.
They can go with a five-foot wall. Okay, all right.
I don't think there's a maximum height, but I'm not sure, twelve feet maybe, twelve feet in height.
Could I just, uh, ask a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Make a comment.
You're still on presentation.
So the only, as I said, all the, the, these drawings and the designs and stuff were based on, um, what Dave Anderson, the Building Inspector, had said. So the thing is, I haven't, uh, had a excavator contractor come out to look at everything, uh, yet because I wasn't aware we needed a, a variance. But, um, I might be of the opinion, it might be worthwhile getting the variance because if the, uh, excavation contractor comes out and says, okay, well, to really do this, I, I can do the five feet where it's twenty feet, uh, from the property line. But, uh, maybe, he might have to extend it another, I don't know, three or four feet, I, I don't know because I haven't really dealt with this issue. So I'm thinking maybe, at least from my perspective, it might be worthwhile to get the variance. So they'll have that in place, or, you know, if the contractor comes in and says, okay, well, I need another three or four feet at five feet instead of four, uh, then that would be in place, I wouldn't have to, you know, reapply.
And, and so, it's a good point.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we get this.
So, you know, my view is, there's no hardship here to justify a variance. Having a family room is not a hardship, or a lack of a family room is not a legal hardship. It might be a hardship to Mr. Shaw, but if we look at the requirements for variance, it doesn't meet the legal requirement for a hardship.
But that's not our contention, Mr. Ryer.
Personal to the applicant, it's supposed to be a general hardship. Connected to the land, not to the applicant.
If you take the addition out and he just wants to widen the driveway, just to make a wider driveway, it is a pretty narrow driveway, especially getting your trailer in there, it's gotta be a.
Yes.
Sure. That wouldn't, then, would be a hardship because of the topography of that. And not, not just that, the fact that it's a pie. It's a very strange-shaped lot, which makes it difficult to put structure on there and fit it in with the, with the, especially with the, uh, the topography. So if you take this, if you take this structure out and just say it's just a retaining wall for a driveway, would that?
Well, if you take this structure out, they don't need to do the retaining wall. They could replace the existing retaining wall, which is, I guess, whatever you said, two feet nine inches. It's under four feet.
Sorry.
That's just my view, I think they could do this as of right, I'm just opposed to granting a variance.
Well, it's, um, probably we can. Well, let's, probably we'll continue.
I don't have any questions.
No, we'll continue this discussion and as we get into the first part, but Al, why don't you take the?
I, my opinion on this is, we're kind of going around a circle. I think it meets both, both the special permit and the variance. Consequently, I'm, I'm of the mind that this is fine, it qualifies on all, on all sides.
If I may, that's why I broke it out, Mr. Chairman, into one and two.
No, I understand. I understand. Anything further?
No, no, I have nothing further.
And Chris?
Yeah, the, I think the, the shape of the property, the topography and all that would allow a variance, it just seems to me that it would. There have been other instances where a lot of people put things in with similar type slopes in the backyard, where a lot of people have exceeded certain coverage criteria and all that. And this one seems to be, fits the, what we've done in the past. So variance would be fine, but as you say, Dave, they can do it by right, but I think variance gives them a little bit of cleaner case. And it seems to me that it's allowed, that it's because of the topography.
Dave?
I agree. I think it follows, you could do it by right or a variance. I do have a question, though, kind of what Mr. Shaw just said. So if we give a variance, because I think kind of like precedent, you know, I know it's case by case, but precedent, if we give a variance, he's, you know, Mr. Shaw, when he gets a excavator crew, he still has to follow the plans of what he's applying, you know, so it's not, what's approved tonight, or what could be approved tonight, then he gets an excavator crew and they say, well, we actually have to extend it out, he can't do that if we give him a variance based on the plans, correct?
He could not widen it further, no.
Widen it further. So he's talking about potentially having to increase the height based off what the excavator says?
I think that's, I think that's what he's saying, is that, given that he's going to put the wall in that, where it's shown on the plan, there may be some of the wall that exceeds five feet in height.
Or four feet.
I'm sorry, four feet in height, that is closer than 20 feet to the lot line. So I think the board could structure a variance to say that they find that where the wall would be less, four feet or less, he can build that as of right, but i- if it needs to be in certain areas, greater than four feet, and less than 20 feet from the setback, then the board grants a variance for those sections.
So in this specific case, he would, he can do it by right, but he would want a variance just because there's so much unknown right now, there's an unknown right now with the topography.
I think he raises a good point.
And then the thing is, the line where the proposed driveway, retaining wall would be, that would not change. I mean, that's, that's, that's perfectly acceptable where it is, so we wouldn't be moving that at all. It's, the only question would be, because, you know, I wasn't aware of this issue in terms of the setback, I never, you know, had anybody come in to determine what the actual height of the wall at that point is. But the, the actual lines on the plot plan aren't going to be moved at all, they're going to be exactly as they are on the, on the plot plans.
Dave?
To Tim's point, I think the applicant is obliged to give us final plans, especially when he's asking for a variance. If he wants it to go beyond four feet, he ought to bring back a set of plans showing what he wants. I don't think we should give him a carte blanche variance to put whatever height he wants, which he can do if this board grants him a variance. As of right, he can go to four feet. If he needs to go beyond that, I think we should be presented with a plan showing how high it's going to be before we grant a variance. We've never given carte blanche to an applicant for variance, we've always granted it based on final plans. And again, I think he can do it of right, so I don't think it hurts him at all if we don't grant a variance. If he wants to go higher, let him come in with new plans.
So you're saying if, do it by right, and if he finds out that the wall is actually higher, come back for variance?
Comes back to us. And yeah, there's another filing fee, but, sorry, that's just, you know, how the process works. I don't think this board should grant a carte blanche variance, in this case or in any case.
If I may, you could put a limit on it and say, but no higher than five feet, something like that. He just doesn't know until he, the excavator comes in, I'm saying, tell him that, okay, you could raise the height of the, of the driveway so that it's never more than four feet, but you raise the height of the driveway and that affects the slope of the driveway down into the drive under garage.
Wouldn't drain.
And it might not drain right. So there's a lot, there's a lot involved.
Would it be possible to do what Attorney Kroll said, just max it, maximal height of five feet? Because five feet, I can't imagine it.
Well, to Dave's, to Dave's point, this, this board typically rules on plans that we can stamp and verify the fact that this is how it's being built. And if we're not capable of doing that, then it's points well taken regarding your changing the, the height of the wall. Any other thoughts on that, gentlemen?
No, I agree. It is a good point.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What is your timeframe on this project? And when do you feel that you would have had an excavator in to take a look at the project?
That's an excellent question. The problem is, I mean, I started this building permit application almost two years ago when I bought the house. And the thing is, to get the plot, the surveyed, it took like six to seven months. To get the architect to do the designs and stuff after the plot plan was done, another six or seven months. I've tried to call, I've contacted four different builders, and none of them have responded to when they possibly could do anything. So, I mean, because they're so short of help, I have no idea how long it's going to take to get, you know, someone to come out and evaluate.
Have you spoken to an excavator?
Pardon me?
Have you spoken to an excavator?
One of, yes, the excavation contractors came out and for one of the builders, because, you know, the builder's controlling, you know, all, all the trades and everything, I think. So, and I still haven't heard from them, that was, you know, three or four weeks ago. So.
I sense that the board is not inclined to grant the variance without plans.
Correct.
So, and we need, if I may, we need a vote of at least four out of the five voting members, right? And at least two or three of them have indicated, know that they want to have plans before they're going to go into grant a variance, but they could see their way tonight to make a decision that as of right, if you keep the retaining wall below four, four feet or below, anywhere where it's beyond, where it's less than 20 feet from the lot line, then you're fine. And if that won't work for you, when you finally get somebody there, then we'd have to come back to the board to ask for a variance for that section of the plant, of the wall.
So.
And I'm going to say, if we're giving you approval tonight for the special permit for both the, the wall, as well as the, the building construction, I mean, your contractor could perhaps be in, I'm assuming, in efforts to put the addition on, and that, that work could start, and do that prior to doing the excavation of the retaining wall. Is that possible? Is there any reason why that couldn't happen for you?
Well, the excavation contractor came to, to view the, the site, he said he didn't want to touch the, the current retaining wall. He, you know, so he didn't want to move anything until they got the, the contractor, the building contractor, in to evaluate, you know, the building of it. So the thing is, you said you, you wanted plans before you would sign off on it. So the thing is, if the, if the plot plan surveyor generated new plans that indicated where the height would be five feet, which would extend maybe another, I don't know, four or five feet down the driveway, would that be adequate, if I got new plans, then to vote on the, on the variance?
I believe if we're specifying the height that you're going to, the variance is going to be granted on, then we're fine.
We could, we could continue the case till next month and come back with plans in the meantime, is that what, is that what we're saying?
Would the, any, any discussion from the board as far as that?
If you want, that's what Mr. Shaw was saying. I don't see, well, my personal view was, you can get a special permit for the addition, and we would do a declaration that under 325-18F, as long as you keep the height of the retaining wall under 20 feet, where it will be closer than 20 feet to your lot line, that's all you would need. You don't, they don't need a special permit for the wall.
Right.
We just need a declaration that the board says 325-18F will govern.
But it doesn't leave the door open for him to come back.
Right, exactly.
This way, if we continued it, he could come back next month, has plans done, and they find that, yes, there are going to be some certain sections, then he could come back next month and say, all right, I, now I would like a variance for this portion of the wall.
Right. I mean, I didn't go out and mention, just eyeball it, but I think Brian's right, the existing area here, it looks like it's only about three feet. So even at four feet, you can go another 12 inches, which I presume lets you go a certain amount back.
You'd always shave the hill.
Yeah.
Right?
I don't know.
Take some of the top.
Yeah, but then he gets into the neighbor's area that.
Ten feet, you can get a nice 10 foot slope.
Just.
I mean, I don't know, but I, I'm not an engineer, but.
You have more options there to come back.
You might be able to get away with four feet, but just going back, you're not.
I don't know what the excavator.
He's not going back more than a couple of feet, is he?
Strong on the.
That's just it, we don't know.
How wide is the driveway expansion, a couple of feet?
How wide is it?
Just your expansion part there.
I should have brought the larger, it's hard to measure, I think it's, let's see, let's see, there's a scale on here.
You can't really tell, but it looks maybe a few feet. Doesn't even look like three feet to me, is it?
No, if you look at scale, I, I think it's nine feet wider.
Expansion?
Yes, I believe so. Because if you look at the, the scale at the bottom of the drawing, five feet is the first mark, and then I think it's, I think it was supposed to be designed for nine feet.
I didn't, I think you're, you may be high on that.
Yeah, I think so. With photocopies, it throws the scale off, too.
I'm assuming we're about four or five, four feet or so.
Wider?
Wider, not nine feet wider.
No, I, you looking at the same plots?
He is, but.
Well, I am, just, just.
June 13 plot plan?
Yeah, so if you look at the scale.
How can you read the scale?
Scale's right there. So there's zero to five, and this is wider than that.
So it's the whole driveway, isn't the black part the expansion?
Right, but I mean, if you.
I'm looking at a picture.
It looks like a couple of feet.
I'm looking at.
Is the black part the expansion? That's the way I'm reading it here.
No, the shaded part is.
The whole thing is the expansion?
So there's a picture of your side yet.
Right.
So where, how far, I mean, are you going to take this wall to the other side of those ferns? That's nine, that's, that's over five feet.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, I think it's, the driveway is going to be nine feet wide, because if you look at, this is the, this is the.
The whole driveway?
No, this is the expanded driveway, it's the shaded area.
Right.
Okay, so that's the shaded area, and if you do that, I believe it should be nine feet.
Wow.
Okay?
Well, how, so are you going to take out the old driveway? Are you going to have like a?
Just widen.
Thirty-foot driveway?
No.
Is this, what, is this your existing driveway coming in here?
This, yes, this is the existing, the driveway here is, is like 12 feet now.
Okay.
And the thing is, because now, now you basically have just the garage here. So now with the additional garage, you have to have an area to.
But you're going to leave this dri- as driveway?
Yeah, that driveway is going to be still the same.
Okay.
That's not being changed. And the problem is, is retaining walls is rotting, and it's, it's starting to lean in, so I'm going to go with a stone retaining wall. So, but this extra width is going to be about nine feet.
Which is going to take you past where your, your ferns are right now.
Yes, I'm sure, just, yep.
So where's the existing retaining, retaining wall on this then? On this side here?
Yeah, that thin line is the existing retaining wall.
Okay.
And this is, the thicker line is the new retaining wall.
Okay.
And there should be a note on here that's, you know, it says four, not to exceed.
Not to exceed four feet. Well, it's a little confusing, because it says within a half, it's not worded correctly, but yeah, that's the idea. It, he doesn't have it worded correctly here.
Okay.
It should be not to exceed four feet when it's within 20 feet of the side setback.
Well, it says within half of the required side, yeah, setback.
Yeah, that's not, but that's not correct, that's not what 325F says, 325-18F says.
It could be clearer. The wording could be clearer on the plan.
Yeah.
But we know what's intended.
Right. We know the intent, but the wording doesn't say it.
So I believe we've outlined a couple of options.
Are you going to ask for comments from the public?
Oh, before we, are you, are you done with your presentation, do you feel, at this point? Okay. Are there any, anybody in the, in the, in the audience like to make a comment, we got in this case? Hearing none?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Does that preclude us from indicating to you what our option, what option we'd prefer?
No, it does not.
We need to vote on that motion, though.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, discussion including the applicant.
The applicant would like to continue the hearing to next month, to September 28th, to allow him time to meet with an excavator, hopefully, but also to have a plan done of the retaining wall by Mr. Stello, present to you at that time to show if there's going to be any portion of the wall that would exceed four feet in height, but be closer than 20 feet to the lot line.
Okay. All those in favor of granting a continuance?
Wait, we need the motion first.
Oh, I'd like to have a motion, we got the continuance.
So moved.
Okay.
We need a second.
Second.
Second, Chris.
Okay.
All right.
I'm about to do that. And can I have a vote here?
Aye.
Okay. All right, continuance approved.
We'll see you next month.
Welcome to the excavator.
That was a lot of work.
Anybody know any?
A lot of work to get two continued cases.
Now, do we need, at this point, another form sign for the continuance? We're all set.
I'm sorry?
We don't need another form sign for the continuance, because it's been a certain date.
The first one.
The first one, so, yeah, on this one.
Well, thank you for your time and attention to this matter, and it's a good, it's good that we didn't have five petitions or eight petitions tonight.
Do I read into the record?
Yes, thank you.
Like, two weeks from now. All right, case number 2022-27, Dale M. and Susan F. Shaw.
Yes, thank you.
All right, case number 2022-27, Dale M. and Susan F. Shaw, with their attorney, William D. Crowe, have been given a continuance until the 28th of September at 7:00 PM.
No, not seven, because we've already got the case at seven.
Okay. After 7:00 PM. Will be continued, uh, this, the property is on map 108 parcel X3-20, our zoning district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All righty.
Okay, gentlemen, I've got a handout here, just so I can go through all the details of our discussion between approval of minutes as well as, when he went down to the... There you go, I'm just going to take that and handle them. So, I want to get through all these items and keep track of things. All right, so, first thing on, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our July meeting. July 27th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from last month? Okay. Now, last month, our meeting was not recorded. It was, the light was on, but it didn't get recorded. Okay? So, I wrote up the minutes myself, and so we didn't go by any recording and so forth. I believe I'm accurate, except for the fact that there have been, as I'm showing different motions, except for the original, you know, motions by Dale would make on the, on the cases, those who might have, you know, a motion for closing a open discussion, public discussion and seconding, I could have been wrong on that. So, if anyone has any suggestions on, on this, on the minutes at all regarding how they should be improved, now's the time. Any, see any corrections? Okay.
I think you did a pretty good job with memory.
Well, I made some notes on the way, I just didn't make enough. You know, to me, coughing, I had every detail, okay? All right, so, I've got a motion to accept the, the minutes from last month. Okay? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes are accepted. Okay. All right. Now, this discussion right now, I'm going to go over on the P E L letter on Chloe's, Chloe's Path of Apartments. Please keep in mind, we can only, discussion here should just be on actions and mechanics of what's, what's happening, not on anything regarding, you know, the, the project itself. So, we did receive, and you guys all got a copy of it, the P E L letter and a letter from the Mass Housing Partnership, okay? So, basically, Chloe's Path of Apartments of Harwich received an eligibility approval from Mass Housing. Now, the, as of today, we have not received a comprehensive permit application, you know, by the, by Chloe's Apartments of Harwich, okay? So, that being said, there's nothing for the board to do regarding an application at the moment, but there are some details that I want to go over as it, as it pertains to what's probably going to be happening. We do anticipate there's going to be an application filed. So, you know, the new application format was sent to Attorney Andrew Singer, and I had that taken care of, make sure that he had it, because he, you know, and it was posted on the website. And Attorney Singer did receipt, did acknowledge the receipt of the, of our new CPA permit application. All right? The, um, tonight, I want to do a couple of things. First of all, in anticipation that the application could be filed early in September, you know, before our next meeting, first want to get, and we will, we're going to need to have a schedule, our first meeting within 30 days of receiving that, you know, that application. So, I want to go over tonight as far as your schedules for, you know, for September and October, early, particularly early October. If there's any dates when you know are blackouts, so that I'm going to be in a situation where I'm going to have to schedule a meeting. And of course, I will be in contact with you, but I want to be able to at least have a heads up as to if there's anybody who has any dates that are absolutely blacked out for September and October. Because I, I don't know what the exact rules are, but I do believe you can't miss more than one meeting, public meeting of a 40B application.
That's what our attorney said.
Right.
I'd still like to know the basis for that.
Me too.
Yeah.
And I know there was, there was something regarding being able to, to watch the, the video.
Yeah, I don't know if that's still in effect though. Well, we did the last 40B, it was a night I could not make it, and I was given the opportunity to go online and watch the meeting because you question me during it. But that was based on my instruction, not necessarily...
Right, but I believe you can only do that...
The law was...
I believe you're allowed, you can only do that once.
Right, that's all I did. Right. Maybe that's under the open meeting law. I haven't really had time to get in to look at it, but our attorney will tell us that, she can tell us.
Yeah, no, but so, I just want to know in September and October right now, if there are any knockout times when you guys say, please don't schedule the meeting here. Now, it's, it's not going to be on weekends. It's going to be in the evening, not going to be daytime meetings on this, I don't believe. And, so what?
For me, 18th of October through the rest of the month, I won't be available.
Okay, so, Chris, you're out October 18th.
Through November 4th.
Okay. All right.
October 25th is no good for me.
October 25th is no good?
No good for me. And these would be evening meetings, huh?
Yes. I can't imagine it's going to be a daytime meeting, this will be evening meetings.
Right, we got a lot of people up on all kinds of things, yeah.
Uh, Tim, any dates you have in your schedule that you could make?
The September 5th through the 8th, but I, you know, I can't imagine it would be, that's...
No, I doubt, that's not going to...
So then, all good?
I need to, I don't want to be difficult. My wife works the emergency, but she literally just bid on a different position, still, and she starts mid-September, she gets her, she starts with her schedule, which she hasn't been supplied her nights, so I, and she works second shift.
Well, do me a favor, when you, she gets a schedule, give me, you...
Yeah, I have her old schedule, but I...
Send me an email regarding...
I'll show just, yeah. You guys pick a, pick a night or two when, and if I could call and show coverage if I need to be here.
We may not see an application in November. I'm right, well, what I'm trying to accomplish now is, if I get an application next week, we have to post a meeting, we got 30 days. So, in, it could be November, it could be next year, we don't know.
Her best nights are Wednesday nights.
They have two years to file.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, so two years? I didn't realize that, okay, yeah.
Wednesday nights are usually every Wednesday off, but that could change.
All right, so typically, okay, so for Dave? Dave?
Wednesday nights are good.
Wednesday meetings are good. Okay, all right.
Now, we'll point out that the big one, I forget if it was Truro or Wellfleet, that went over a year. So, they had many, 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 many special meetings.
Which one?
It was either Truro or Wellfleet.
Truro was the one, I think, yeah.
Big project, and the big issue was wastewater, but...
Yeah, that wasn't Truro.
Well over a year, I don't remember exactly.
If that kind of situation, if it goes on that long, the requirement, you can only miss one meeting, becomes very difficult.
Well, that's why we need to nail that down. We'll have to...
It's going to be long.
The other thing we probably want to find out from Attorney Amy, what's her last name?
Chris or something like that.
Kezwell or whatever. Anyway, the other thing we want to find out from her is, at one point, we can ask the applicant to sign one of these continuance letters, like we got tonight, to extend beyond the dates. If it looks like this project is going to be complicated enough, so it's going to drag way out beyond our timetable.
Okay.
So, we'll want to have her know when we, yeah, we have 180 days after the opening of a public hearing to close it.
I think we did that last time too.
It was extended.
It's like it's going beyond that, we need an agreement with the applicant.
That's a question for our outside, our downtown counsel.
I don't know where, where I am or where my wife is.
Okay. We will check that out. All right. Uh, Al?
I need a rather boring life, so consequently, I'm available.
Okay, Al, all right, you and me.
Right now, it's open, but I'm praying that something comes up.
You're what?
I said I'm praying that something comes up.
Okay, good, all right, well...
Al, you don't have a life, you don't have a life right now, would you like to have something that's...
All the kids have been down.
They're hiring at the hospital, if you're looking for it.
You know, if, if...
I don't like to hear that, for any reason.
If in fact, we can only miss one meeting each, we're really going to have to look at the schedules to make sure we have enough voting members from at the end when we come to a vote.
Last man standing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in February, March, I'm gone for over six weeks. And I won't be able to call in from New Zealand.
I'm, I'm gone in February for like 10 days, in February, first 10 days, so it's actually 12 days.
What we can do, of course, is schedule the meetings around when people aren't here, when we don't think we're going to have enough people. Because we're going to set when the, the meetings are. You're going to set when the meetings are.
Right, yeah, yeah.
By talking to all of us for our schedules. So that we'll sort of control that.
This has to follow, fall within the timelines?
More by...
It has to fall in with a certain amount of, you know, within certain days.
The timelines, you got that in that, in one of those handouts.
Yeah.
You know, you can look later, it shows, there's a timeline later that shows everything has to be done.
But that's why we might need an extension on 180 days, because you can't always schedule the meeting next week, next month, whatever. We don't have enough members available.
That's true.
But that's why we'll talk to Attorney Whit, Rizzo.
But once the meeting is going, we do have to have the same members that are going to be on the, have to vote.
Right.
So...
So, the five voting members can only miss one? It doesn't matter if someone fills in or something like that?
But that's why Amy told us, she keeps a schedule every meeting when she attends them, of who's there.
So, wait a minute. All right, so let's say we start off with five people, and somebody gets sick...
We're going to have more than five, I would hope.
No, 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 but, but, wait a minute. Like, we have a case now, the chair doesn't know who's going to vote. But we're not going to be doing that at the onset of this public meeting, or the first public meeting of the 40B.
It, it would depend if we only have one case that looked like just a quick special permit, maybe?
No, 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 what I mean is, when the application gets filed, we have our first public meeting. At that first meeting, we're not designating voting people. We're all going to be there, and it's, isn't it at the end? Is, when do we designate who, who are the five voting members of the board?
At the, the end.
At the...
We need to have as many as we can at the beginning.
Right, no, I got to make sure there's at least five people that, that meet requirements.
Well, we want more than that, because that way, if you only have five, and one of them goes out more than two, then we're down, or two of them go out more than two, or more than one, we don't have enough voting members then, we'd only have three of us. You see what I'm saying?
No.
At the end, we need five people.
Right, so we, we have seven now, we have seven members of the board right now.
Right.
Okay, five full members and two, and two alternates, or two, whatever.
Hopefully, we have all seven.
So, we have, we have these seven, but at, at the, at the onset of this deliberation and the present, you know, we started having meetings, I'm not designating voting people at that point.
No.
The voting's going to come...
At the last meeting.
At the last meeting. And so, at that point, the last meeting, we determine, if everybody's eligible, great. But then we determine who the five people are who are still eligible.
And if I've missed two meetings?
Exactly.
If I've missed two meetings, I'm done.
Well, perhaps, we're going to find out.
Exactly, right.
All right, and, uh, and I, we, interesting to find out from the, from Amy whether or not, if that voting situation is, you know, state law, or is it something that the applicant kid could agree to allow the fact that somebody voted, it's been, only been, who might have seen the videos, but might have missed two meetings.
You've got to ask Amy.
That's what I'm saying, probably got to ask her that, all right. So...
Brian has asked, when he, went to the town manager, has asked to get the attorney at all of the meetings with us. I'm not qualified, okay? Not a project like this.
I think she was here last time, she sat down here in front.
Well, that was only one meeting though. We're going to want her at everyone on this one.
So...
That's true.
This is going to be complicated.
That, that being the case, the, uh, we did the calendar, you know, so the calendar was all set at the moment. So, I did go, and I sent in, you got a copy of it, request to the selectman's office and, and, you know, for legal assistance, and they approved it.
Right.
The question though, they didn't give me a dollar range, they just approved it.
No dollar range.
Okay, so that's what they, so it was, it was approved retroactively, so I got that approved.
Which, and my feeling is, I had said that, we, we need her there for every meeting.
Yeah, and, and I...
Isn't that maximum, by state law, $15,000?
No, that's something different. That, that's the 15,000, that has to do with the...
Peer review.
That's a peer review situation, okay. So, that's, that's the next item here. So anyways, I got ahold of Massachusetts Housing Partnership. And first of all, they sent me the updated guidelines for 2022. I had sent out to you guys a copy of the previous guidelines, but I did get from, from Housing Partnership, the procedural guidelines. and we were emailing each other back and forth and so forth, and, and they're very responsive. So, what they've suggested is, even though we don't have an application yet, they recommended that we meet with them at the most, always convenient time, just to, you know, start the process with them. And during that meeting with them, they will go over the whole process regarding having a consultant, which, and in talking to her, given what the town's past use of one might have been, that she, she felt that it would be reasonable to assume that we could get the full $15,000 grant for a consultant. All right, that's really going to help on, really, the, help us guide ourselves through this, you know, situation, okay? So, I contacted town office, talked to, spoke to Joe. Actually, I, I called up and they got back to me, I didn't speak to him. But they, he felt he didn't need to be at a meeting, but would attend a meeting with the Massachusetts Housing Partnership if we, we felt was important. Given the dates that she gave me, there were two primary dates in the daytime. Now, what it means is, it's not, it's not a whole board situation. I just want to get a couple, you know, two, three of us there to know a little about this. So, if you're also going to attend, we have three possible dates. Two Mondays, November, September 19th and September 26th. And there's a Wednesday anytime during the day, but on that, the 14th, that Wednesday, Leach, you can't make it. Now, what's important here is, the discussion is going to be with them regarding walking us through the application process, which we'll have to, the board, you know, Board of Appeals needs to fill out. And then we also have to have the town, selectman, the chief, you know, the chairman of the, of the selectman board, sign off on it as well. Now, what's important here is, the discussion's gonna be with them regarding walking us through the application process, which we'll have to, the board, you know, board appeals needs to fill out, and then we also have to have the town selectman, the chief, you know, the chairman of the selectman board, sign off on it as well, besides myself, you know, when we do an application. And so that's the main thing, is to go through that process with them, and also discuss further what the special, the special legal assistance is gonna be, technical assistance, you know, from her, from her office, okay? Now.
Did Joe, is Joe gonna go with you? I didn't hear that.
No, Joe said he didn't need to, I'm gonna have the meeting here, hopefully, in Howard. Joe said he didn't think it was necessary for him to be there, but I do believe, but I'm, I'm probably gonna end up requesting that he do, do appear if he can.
But did.
The main thing, right.
He's not gonna sign it, right, it'd be the head of.
No, it'd be the selectman to sign it.
Selectmen and chairman will sign.
The chairman of the select board signs it, and myself.
Okay.
Okay.
So he'll probably wanna know whoever, I don't even know who's chair now, was it?
McCaskill, I think.
Oh, which he was chair before, I can't think of his name at the moment.
Yeah, the select board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Who is it?
McCaskill.
Okay.
He had been chair, he's back again.
So.
He'll probably wanna ask Joe about it, so.
Yeah, I mean, Larry is our, Larry Valentine is our liaison, so what I was gonna do here is, if we decide on a date, which I'll confirm with Mass Housing, then I'm going to send him, Larry, as well as Joe, information regarding that. The key thing is, I'm hoping to get Leisha at the meeting, because there's gonna be a lot of paperwork, and I'd like to get probably somebody else from the administration at that meeting as well, so that she's gonna need assistance, cause she's a one-man band in that office now. So the town's gonna have to give some additional clerical help to accomplish getting the application properly filed, okay? And as well as, what will happen is, we'll prepare an application, and not finish it off, and then when the, the applicant, potential applicant, excuse me, if we, we do get a, a comprehensive permit sent in, at that point, after we read the permit, then we'll finalize the application to Mass Housing Partnership and send that in. But rather not be behind the eight ball.
Let me ask you a question.
Have to be hustling that at the same time.
No, that makes good sense.
You, you already identified what appears to be a bottleneck, it's gonna be a bottleneck, cause Leisha.
Well, she needs more help.
Less things change, what I'm saying is, instead of you getting yourself buried, you're buried, it will be buried, is put it on the town management, to ensure that the personnel are going to be available to complete the work that's gonna have to be done, as far as all this paperwork is gonna go.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and that's why I'm going to pretty much, you know, I think recommend highly, we get more involvement, even on the Mass Housing Partnership situation, with, with, with town administration. And of course, there is an assistant town manager, is it, is it, what's her name, Marion Eldridge?
Eldridge.
Eldridge, you know, we certainly, like, at least get her involvement.
Megan, Megan Eldridge.
Megan Eldridge, we get her involvement to, to assist things and help coordinate, I asked, I told, I gave the dates to Leisha a couple days ago, she was going to inform administration, the town, selectman's office, about these dates, and I asked her to talk about, that she needs additional help, particularly, if she goes to this meeting, they, they gotta at least cover the office while she's out of there. Now, she's on vacation next week, by the way, guys.
Yeah, Sunday's paper, they're trying to hire a board secretary, was in this past Sunday's chron, uh, kick-out times.
Yeah, and I, in, I, I'm satisfied that they're, they're doing their best to hire somebody, okay? But anyways, that's a scoop on that, so.
Hey, wait, one last thing.
On the dates, what's good?
On this Mass Housing Partnership, Amy was gonna give us recommendations on the peer review people.
Right, but that comes after the application is sent in.
It does, okay.
Yes, so we send in the application, and then, at that point, once they approve a grant, then we, at that point, work with them regarding who we wanna have to be the, you know.
Okay, I was just wondering if you may, maybe wanna get that started, too, to make sure they've got, just to make sure they've got availability.
But we don't know the timeframe.
Okay.
Until we get a CPA in here, we don't have a timeframe.
No, I know that, but.
But once the application, once we get a CPA, then I would get, in anticipation that we're gonna get a grant from Housing Partnership, obviously, we'd be getting Amy, you know, on the swing, and I've been talking to Amy on this, I mean.
Okay, well, will you meet with them, and they'll tell you how quickly they'll.
Right.
Process the thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So on those two dates, particularly, the eleventh, on the, I mean, the nineteenth and twenty-sixth, who could attend a meeting those days? Al, Dave, are you available?
Uh, yeah, I can do it, either one, doesn't matter, if you want me to come.
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
All right.
Come here, performance, David.
Okay, Chris, you're available, okay? It's eleven to two, I mean, all you guys are working, okay? All right, so I just wanna be able to get a group effort here to make sure that we're doing it right.
I don't wanna throw another wrinkle into this.
Oh, go ahead.
But.
Come on.
Why not?
There is a.
Go for it.
Town has just received funding to put sidewalks in on Sisson Road. And apparently, as if I read it correctly, I've forgotten the dollar value of it, but on the west side of Sisson Road, going from Howard Center, down as far as, and I think it's somewhere beyond the fire station, to either put a five-foot, or possibly eight-foot path, and then the eight-foot, we'd be capable, apparently, carrying bikes. My only reason for saying this, is this is all going to be, if it's done about the same time as this project's being done, there's gonna be a lot of talk relative to all of that and neighborhoods.
Yeah, well, we can't deal with that now.
I know that.
We shouldn't discuss that.
We can't discuss that here, you know.
No, but I don't, I don't mean, I'm not talking about discussing it, just to let you know that that's gonna be possibly out there at the same time as all of this is going on.
And I'm sure, I'm sure, anything that's going on in that neighborhood is gonna be a part of any discussion by the applicant and this board, and trying to work out a reasonable, you know, decision, okay? All right, so, all right, so those dates are good.
Okay, and you'll let us know when you decide which one?
Yeah, I'm gonna get it, now, the, Katie Lacy is, is still in this week, and Emma McGurran, she's back on Monday, so at that point, they already gave me these dates as far as they're good for them, so I'll go, I'll send a note to Katie Lacy tomorrow. It's either gonna be both of them, or just one of them coming to meeting, and just confirm that it's gonna be here, and I already had Leisha in advance set up, you know, a small meeting room, and requested that we can also have it, make it a public meeting, and we'll, of course, we'll.
Right, if you can't get the one here, there's always rooms in the community center, meeting rooms.
She mentioned that to me, yeah, very good. Okay, so that's, that's it for that, anybody got any questions regarding what I discussed on, on this P E L from Close Path Apartments and Mass Housing Partnership, they're all set, okay? All right, the. I sent you guys just sort of, just a note, because I was surprised that my, someone who I don't know, got ahold of my email address, and I received, and I was, made sure, get reported to town, by the way, that I, I received a inquiry and discussion regarding the whole project, and I did, you saw the letter I sent back to them, I believe, this, you know, respectfully questioning why, cause open meeting laws, I could not get in discussion, but I just wanna point out to everybody, if they found my email address, you guys, you know, people could possibly be approaching you as well, and it could be, and, you know, friends, neighbors, once this thing, once we get involved with any case that comes up for the board, you know, we just, you gotta just say, you know, use the open meeting line, and, and we cannot discuss it this time. So I just wanna make it aware of that, nothing further to discuss, but just make sure you're all aware of it.
So you didn't send them to your house?
Yeah, just, you know, and this person indicated that they planned on discussing this with me.
I was told, Dave.
You know, often, you know, often, and it wasn't gonna be the last contact, but I have not heard back from the individual, and I think he respected my email, and I, and, of course, there's gonna be a lot of concerned citizens on any issue that comes for the town, they're gonna wanna have their voices heard, but we have to make sure it's done at the open meetings, okay? All right. Updated chapter thirty twenty-five zoning manuals. Do you guys take a look at it, do you see any problems? What I had done was, I had pulled out every update town had since late two thousand seventeen, went through them all, and then I originally had, had updated books, we've gotten the old versions we had, and then I said, you know, I gotta check what's on the website, and, and I discovered that, although I was told differently before, the website version was up to date. So those of you who've been using the website, you, you guys mentioned you log on to that, the website was up to date, all right, so I think it, I made sure you all got, you know, new manuals regarding that. What I had to do was, at the index, on the new, on the new website, the updated website, doesn't print, so I had to gerrymander, you know, like, the updates I did receive on these, on the different amendments that were done, or updates on the zone that was, I had logs of, they, they had updated the indexes in those, but send out like, this page, update this page, but it was never always done in one whole new index. So that's why the index I sent you, I got sections I crossed out, that no longer valid, and go on to the, you know, to the next section, okay? Anybody have any questions regarding the update?
No, nice job on that, it was a big, big job.
Very nice.
All right, now, well, I've got you, I, I didn't do one thing, which I'm putting in your responsibility.
Oh, boy.
I know, I know, here we go. I did not check, now, the, the zoning, the, the amendments, did anybody look as if, now, so we look at the first, the first page of. So I wanna make sure that what we've got here, so, now regarding the current attachments. According to the town clerk, the town is redoing the district maps and all that kinda stuff for next year, okay? So I just kinda wanna check if we can just go through this quickly on the attachments, which ones that we've got, and which ones I need to dig out and find. So if we go to. The zoning code in the back of the book. We have attachments, and if one attachment is supposed to be the solar farm overlay district map, is that in the book at all? Did you bring your book with you?
I don't have a book yet.
Oh, no, it would've been at the office, just said, did you pick up your?
I picked up the pack.
And the book wasn't there then? Okay, so it's in the office.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I know, I, I got a book for everybody, I put it, everyone should have a book. Okay. So it, it is there.
I'm not seeing the, the solar.
As a matter of fact. Right now, for this discussion, here's another copy of the book. All right, so we don't, anybody, you don't see a solar map in there? Okay, all right. Okay, attachments, use regulations, attachments one, two, three, four, table one, use regulations, area regulations, height and bulk regulations, wanna make sure that they're in here. So I see, attachment three twenty-five, attachment one is use regulations, so we've got that, I see that in my list. So it should be in the back.
Yeah, we've got the other two, area, the height and bulk.
We have area, we have bulk, okay, all right, is there a zoning map in here somewhere?
I took one from the old, you know, you can't really read it, so.
I do. I do. No.
At that size, you can't read it anywhere.
I got the zoning map as well, from the old, the old book, and it's.
You'd really have to get a full-size.
Yeah. All right, yes, but we need a full-size, all right, maybe you can pull it off? Let me find out.
This new one has a, I'm not sure if it's full-size, but it's bigger than just a piece of paper.
Okay.
It's like, maybe.
Oh, that was from the original books, you, you've got, you, I, both, both you and Dave, I think in your books, I pulled them from old books, so you have a full thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hasn't the zoning map changed, though?
Oh, yeah, you got one, Al.
Yeah, I know I do, but I thought, this is changed, this is the old one.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, that, that's.
It's from twenty-ten.
It's part of the old book.
But it's changed.
Twenty-ten?
Yeah, yeah, cause the plan board changed.
All right, I have, I have that as well.
Twenty-ten, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's not up to date.
It's probably, again, when the town clerk told me they're gonna be redoing this, that's probably part of it, all right? And. The village commercial overlay district, is that in here?
Yep.
It is, okay, good.
Well.
I mean, in my old book.
Is it the current one?
No, I don't think it's the old one.
It'd be, it'd be the old ones, right.
I have two thousand and one data on mine.
I've got twenty-ten.
That overlay district changed on Parallel Street.
Village commercial overlay.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, I'll find out when the last update was, and I'll try to get everyone, make sure, you, you've got, you've got twenty-ten, Dave? Okay.
Same on the Six Ponds, twenty-ten.
Yeah.
Actually, all of them, twenty-ten.
They're all twenty-ten.
Howard Center restored.
Okay.
District twenty-ten.
All right, attachment eight and nine. Oh, I'm sorry, we have the, the Howard historic district.
Right.
Um, nine, I don't have.
The Six Ponds district?
That.
That's a, that's a ten.
Historic district. Six Ponds, yep.
Attachment nine is a twenty-twenty, that's the West Howard Special District map. Good luck in reading it.
Yeah, I, I don't know what happens if you have any cases, I think, so we'll have to, I think if anything comes up on a case that involves some of these places, we're definitely gonna have to get a larger map for the meeting and so forth, if that ever comes up.
And this is useless.
Yeah, okay, all right.
To go back, you mentioned solar farm overlay district map, does anyone have that?
I don't have it.
Six Ponds, yeah.
No, 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 solar.
Solar farm.
Which one, the historic?
No, solar.
No, solar, solar.
Solar.
Solar, uh.
I couldn't find that anywhere.
No. I haven't seen one.
No. Oh, I do have the West Howard Special District map, just out of place, attachment nine.
Twenty-twenty, that's the early showing.
Can you read it?
No, so you can't read it.
All right, so what I, as I mentioned this, this handout, I asked the town clerk also, when they do the, they're gonna have the. Outside agency come in and work on the website, as well as the zoning maps, I, it's my understanding, and ask at the same time, that it'd be, they set up the website, so it can't be printed out, the index can be printed, right now, it can't be. No, no idea why, I tried a thousand different ways, and the town clerk couldn't do it either.
You know, I, I'm gonna make a suggestion, instead of trying to get them for the books, why don't we just, if we ever have a case, we've never had a case.
Have full maps available.
Yeah, we'll have her, have Leisha print a full map in our packet, so we each have a full map.
Yep.
I mean, thirteen years, we've never had one in a special district, I don't think.
If it happens, we'll get the full maps, okay?
You, I don't, do you ever remember, I don't remember any.
Okay. All right, so we're done with any other questions on the manual, we're all set there, so you should, when you, when you, when you, you're going to see Leisha, she has your book, if not, you know, if I can have that copy back, but, but I'll make sure that, talk to her.
Thank you for making them.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Part of the copy, it's a lot easier.
Okay. Uh, also in your packet, there was a letter from Cape Cod, commission letter, did you guys see that?
Yeah, what was that about?
All right, so basically, I have, first of all, I have a call into the commission to find out what it means to the Howard Appeals Board, but basically, the situation there is, let me just pull up my notes. And I went down there. So.
So I'll get clear a whole bunch of land.
Yeah, so Dirt Works money operation. Yeah, so Dirt Works Mine Operation, uh, which is, the building is located in Harwich, you know, the service building, but there's land that goes into Dennis.
Yep, so that's Main Street, Harwich.
Right, okay, so basically, um, my understanding here is, and I have, I'm gonna find out if there's any steps we're supposed to take, it's probably, if anything, it's probably more, more so on our own planning board, but, um, uh, they started clearing, you know, public of the land.
That's what I thought of housing, I wasn't on the board, but you guys approved it way down the end of that street.
Oh, yeah.
And Dirt Works, it's got a berm there, and the other side of it, that's where they're.
Some of this, some of this is Dennis, I think it's Dennis.
It is, it is.
Well, yeah, but the land.
South Dennis, huh?
The land, the land is in Harwich and Dennis. The, the building itself, that they have a, they have a maintenance facility there, and, you know, and they, that's, that's in Harwich, from what I can tell. But they started, started clearing public of the land in Dennis, and maybe impartial in Harwich, not quite sure how much of it, that, um, they weren't supposed to do without going through proper channels. And it became, I guess, obviously, uh, to the attention of the, uh, of the Cape Cod Commission, which is the municipal county, uh, you know, department, and, uh, they are now, I guess, uh, working with them to go through proper channels on what they've accomplished. And, and, um, and Dennis does not have, on the buy, on the buy laws, you know, anything approved to be able to, to do mining, which in this case, it's, they're not digging for ore, it's sand, you know, whatever they might be doing there, so.
It's not Bitcoin?
Not Bitcoin, not like that, okay.
Their trucks are going in and out on a regular basis, I see them.
Yeah, no.
They take a lot of soil.
So, if I'm, from reading this particular, letter from Cape Cod Commission, it's, they're doing it without authorization, okay? But I don't know that, for a fact, so I need to, you know, I have a call into, uh, call into them. I made, uh, contact with, with Jordan Velozza, who's the chief, it's a, it's a lady, a chief regulatory officer for municipal county for the Cape Cod Commission. So, you know, we'll, more at eleven, we'll find out what's happened, now it's all here.
Does that fall under our building commissioner as opposed to, uh, the zoning board?
Well, they, you know, obviously, I, I, I mean, I can't speculate, I have no idea, I have no idea. All I know is they felt they did, to the extent that they, they sent it to our planning board, to the health, health department in town, um, and, uh, and to our, and to our board. So, uh, I suppose at some particular point, if a variance was required, and I, and I also don't know, when you have land that crosses between two towns, if it's not in separate, if it's not in separate lots, does what happens on the parcel in Dennis, do we have any type of control over, since it's, since the, the egress is in, in Harwich? I have no idea, I don't know what, where that stands, Dave, do you have any idea?
Looking.
So I don't know where, what next step, if any, or what stage that we're supposed to be involved or, so I know nothing.
Let me just throw this out, if this thing turns out to be a real red herring, I think the police department can be involved in, and I'm gonna tell you why. I think there may be a weight limit on that Main Street road, and bringing that equipment out loaded may violate the weight limit on the roadway. I don't know for a fact it does, it's all commercial down there for the most part.
It's all special permits, I mean, there's no, there's no, it's not a commercial zone.
No, no, it's right, but it's.
I don't believe it's a commercial zone, okay?
There's water shops, no, there's none down there.
Just wanna update you guys regarding that, okay, so.
Yeah, I will note that three twenty-five eighty-nine covers excavation and removal of sand, gravel, quarry, and other earth materials. Remember, this came up with Losers Way or something in that area where they wanted to, uh, do the, the, they were doing it.
Right behind Chris's house.
Yep.
So, but what happens when.
Mike and back there this afternoon?
When a parcel is between, if it's one single parcel, and it's be, and it's, it's in two different towns, two different towns, and the egress is through just one town.
Well, you gotta look at three twenty-five eighty-nine, we need to see where the parcel is.
Right.
We need to get a map.
Oh, we, we need to know what, what involvement was, what, what, what stage we get involved in, if, if at all.
But some of this might be pertinent to our side in Harwich.
Okay.
What they're doing, but.
I'll look it up.
I think at this point, we don't know enough.
Yeah.
We need a, a map and, I don't know, Cape Cod.
Well, I will, I will read three twenty-five eighty-nine, if you guys have an opportunity at some point, that's great, and I'll, if there's anything that comes up, I'm aware of, uh, regarding, I, you know, strictly, just get, I'll send you guys an email strictly to let you know what I was told by Cape Cod Commission.
Yeah, well, you talked to Mr. Velozza, why don't you see if they have any maps or site plans or any kind of documentation they can give us to make a determination?
Okay. All righty. Last one, it didn't go out yet from Alicia, I, I'll send it out. I received another email from the town and from KP Law regarding a review of meeting rules that I think she, were written up for, for Harwich, okay? As well as a review of, you know, when you can call an executive session. So I'll, I'll send that email out, you know, shortly, okay? Okay, uh, is, are there any other new business that anyone wants to bring up or discuss?
Yeah, it just occurred to me, uh, my fault, I didn't know they were gonna wanna continue this case, but twenty twenty-two, twenty-seven, when they come back, we're gonna have to move to reopen the public hearing, 'cause they're gonna present, we closed the public hearing on it, and then after that, they decided they want a continuance.
Okay.
So just the procedural, we'll need to reopen.
Really, okay. So.
I'm saying it out loud, 'cause I won't remember, but this way I've got one, two, three, four, five people to help me remember.
So wait a minute, so, if we're, all right, so we're, we're gonna reopen the, the public meeting.
Yeah, just reopen the public hearing, so they can present their new info, and if anybody in the audience wants to come in, they can.
Now, the public hearing adds up tonight, so the date would be tonight when we bring that up.
Well, we close it on it, no, we close it with respect to the case.
Right.
So that's why we need to reopen, because immediately after we voted, the attorney general then asked for a continuance.
Okay.
So I'm just sitting here thinking about it, like, we need to, gonna have to just reopen, it's a small procedural, Larry.
Okay. All right, anybody, uh, anything else for new discussion?
I just got a quick question, I know it's kinda running late, but just as like a courtesy, um, to people applying to, or, um, you know, getting going in front of the zoning board for, let's say, next meeting, so we've had two cases continued, does the town, like, ever say, like, oh, we, you know, the board may not get to you or anything, it would, the only reason I'm thinking is potentially if someone has a small thing where, you know, they're gonna stay for two hours to only hear that their case is getting continued.
We've done that.
Yeah, we've done this.
We've done that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've told ahead of time?
Yeah, we're telling that there's so many cases, there's a good chance we won't get to the end, that these last three cases, we may not be able to get to them.
Maybe at ten o'clock.
Yeah, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, you know, closeout.
Okay, yeah, no, and it's probably a reminder for like the next meeting, I was just kinda thinking out loud, just for that next meeting.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Right now, there's only one case, new case for, um, September, so now we'll have three.
Hopefully it's straightforward.
Yeah, and, and I mean, typically, we go through four cases without any time problems, and, uh.
Normally, I mean, the big caseload will be January, February, March, when everybody wants to get whatever plans approved, so they can do the work when the, um, weather gets better. Remember last year, we were having seven and eight cases there in the after winter months.
Everybody wanted to do it yesterday.
The other thing we've used that ten o'clock meeting for is the forty Bs, because then, you know, you could go around the clock if you let them, and, um, normally, we've announced right at the outset, okay, we'll go to ten or ten-three, whatever we think is reasonable, and then that's it, we'll continue and take it up.
You had a, um, you had a system relative to that when you opened the meeting, it also had to do with the, uh, people with the microphone. Know what it was?
No.
It's when people come up and they speak. Because if, if there's a lot of people.
Oh, yeah, yes.
After a point.
I only wanna hear new info, not repetitive stuff, yes.
Right, uh, I think, uh, Dave, Dave sent me an email on that, and a suggestion on how to handle it, which is, you know, to allow, I mean, let people know upfront that, um, you know, we're getting the same point, pick your best three that wanna talk about it, and, um, and after that, if it's, they have nothing further to say, that no additional points of, of view, you know, we're gonna shut it down.
If it's okay with you, I'm gonna send to you a little synopsis of the key provisions of the code of Massachusetts regulations that speak to our obligations, if you wanna put conditions on a permit or deny it or whatever.
Okay.
The requirements that we have to live up to, to support it, I think that might be helpful, but I'll send it to you, you look at it, if you wanna send it on.
I think we oughta, you know, after I view it, let it send to everybody, okay? All right, so, um, I think, uh, without any objections, we're gonna ask for a motion to close the meeting.
Still moved.
Okay, can I have a second? Okay. This meeting is, uh, adjourned, oh, I'm sorry, are all of you in favor? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, let's have vote.
All in favor.
Okay, is anyone in this, meeting is closed.
All right, good meeting, Brian.